Yeah, I guess at least they're there. But today is...
The other one?
We're at that map show.
Well, yeah. Do you want, do you should we?
They approved my physical therapy like six sessions at a time.
I mean, they were all fine.
So I just got...
Calling to all of the June 19th meeting of the 36th Council of the City of Berkeley. Please call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Blanchard.
Here.
Councilmember Gravelin.
Here.
Councilmember Kedekel.
Here.
Councilmember Stedman.
Here.
Councilmember Turbrack.
Here.
And Mayor O'Dwyer.
Here.
The first order of business is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to approve tonight's agenda, moving items on the regular agenda, two and three, to the consent agenda. Therefore, item number four will become number two and succeed down the road.
Thank you. Is there a second or?
Support.
Support. Been moved by Councilmember Kedekel, and it's good to see him back here at the council meeting again.
Good to be back.
And supported by our Mayor Pro Tem. Please call the roll on this item.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravelin.
Yes.
Kedekel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now please stand for the invocation.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you and thank you for this opportunity to come together as a community to meet, to make decisions that will affect the whole community. And so I thank you for this council. I thank you for our mayor and the decisions that they are about to make tonight. I just ask for your blessing upon them. And I also think about how the schools have ended recently and with the graduations and whatnot. I thank you for all the students that have come through the Berkeley City Schools, and I just pray your blessing over them for their trips to college and their furthering their education and work that comes afterward. So I just ask that you bless them, and thank you for all the other students who have been in our schools. And I just pray that they would be able to enjoy their summer, but that also that they would value their education that they've gotten. I pray also for the teachers as they enjoy their summer as well and prepare for the coming year, that they would continue to work well with the students in our community and help better the next generation. And I just pray for our community as a whole, that you would continue to watch over us, bless us, and help guide us as we continue forward this year. In Jesus' name, amen.
Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we come to the citizens' comments portion of tonight's meeting, where you may present your thoughts on issues that are not included on tonight's agenda. Council members will not engage you in discussion. If your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or a department of the city, please sign your name on the sheet provided at the clerk's desk. You may speak on a specific agenda item when it is being considered. When an individual has completed their comments, we ask that you refrain from gestures of approval or disapproval because that can be intimidating to some residents. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence.
Hello, good evening. Melanie Stevens, Berkeley, Michigan. And I'm here this evening to present recommendations on behalf of the Citizens Advisory Committee. I'm going to start by reading our formal recommendation and then just give you a little bit of clarity behind this and give you an opportunity to answer any questions that you have. In the completion of its mission as charged by the Berkeley City Council, the 2017 Citizens' Advisory Committee for Infrastructure Improvements makes the following recommendations in addition to those previously reported to the city council. On behalf of the community center, by unanimous vote, the CAC recommends that city council take the appropriate action to place on the ballot a bond millage for the construction of a new community center as identified as option 1B in the recent StanTech land usage report. City Hall and the Historic Firehouse. By unanimous vote, the CAC recommends that city council take the appropriate action to place on the ballot a bond millage for the renovation and remodeling of City Hall and the Historic Firehouse in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000. In regards to the ballot, by majority vote, the CAC also recommends that any ballot proposals related to these or its previous recommendations be placed on the ballot as separate ballot proposals, respectfully submitted 2017 Citizens Advisory Committee for Infrastructure Improvements. So one point, I guess, that I wanted to clarify is regarding the community center. And the StanTech study, option 1B is just a standalone community center, so it's not to include... That would actually be on the current site so as not to disrupt things like the tennis courts. I think you'll find in the StanTech study, some of the options that we looked at were going to affect that. And, you know, after talking to a lot of Parks and Rec and some of the other, some of the other people that are involved, we just felt that that would be maybe kind of detrimental as well as very costly. So it's not, option 1B also does not include an ice arena, so it really is just standalone new community center. So, questions or...
Well, very good. First thing I'd like to say is thank you for your leadership and to everyone on the committee, diligence, the hard work, and the effort that's gone into this. I think now our next step will be to, for us here as a council, to begin to consider this and talk about how we can move things forward. Are there any questions from anybody or comments from anybody on the council on this critically important item? Very good. Melanie, thank you very much, and thank you to everybody on the committee.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Very soon, three terms will be expiring on the Planning Commission. It's time for you to carefully consider who you're going to appoint.
You cannot make a political announcement at a city council meeting.
This is not a political announcement.
Okay. Just informing you of the rules. We cannot use taxpayer-paid television communication system to advance a candidacy.
Understood.
Thank you.
Our Planning Commission has done a lot of good work over the years. Its members have volunteered tremendous amounts of time and talent to the city. However, I feel that five of the commissioners have demonstrated they are no longer able to serve our community. As their terms expire, they should be reappointed. In their May 23rd meeting, these five members ignored our ordinances and gave preapproval for the Lausanne apartment development. They did so with complete disregard to the legal framework required for such an approval, just to move things along and to see what would happen. Their role is not to try and help shepherd a huge development through the planning process. Their role is to uphold our laws and protect the residents during the process. The problem is not that they made an unpopular decision. The problem is that they so flagrantly disregarded the legal requirements for the Lausanne proposal. Those who will not follow the law should not serve. However, I want to commend the members who followed our ordinances and denied the application. Mr. Richardson, Ms. Shadle, and Mr. Tangeri. They were able to cite the specific legal reasons for denial. I thank them for their willingness to vote against their peers and to follow our laws. You as council members have rightly faced the wrath of the community for the actions of the Planning Commission. You appointed them. If they're not doing their job properly, it's your responsibility to correct it in your new appointments. I don't want you to just appoint mindless robots who will think exactly as you do. I want people who will challenge you and who will think independently. But I also want people who will follow our laws. Please choose carefully as you appoint the new round of members to the Planning Commission. Thank you.
Doug Deeds, citizen of Berkeley for thirty-some years. I'm looking for citizens to volunteer within the city of Berkeley. There are different committees, the parade committee, the beautification committee. There are several different organizations out there that are striving to make Berkeley a better-looking place and someplace to call home. So volunteer. You can contact the city and find out what organization that you would much prefer. The Tree Board, like I say, there are a lot of different committees out there that strive to make the city of Berkeley a better place. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug. Seeing no one else coming to the microphone, then we will move on to the consent agenda. Would you please read the items on tonight's lengthy consent agenda?
Approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the regular 36th city council meeting on Monday, June 5th, 2017. Number two, the warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1315. Number three, ordinance number O-04-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 6, Division 2, model glue of the Berkeley City Code to broaden the prohibition of sniffing and huffing vapors to cover other chemical agents besides model glue. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Number four, ordinance number O-05-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 6, Division 3, Controlled Substances of the Berkeley City Code to modify and supplement definitions and prohibitions relating to drug paraphernalia. A full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Number five, ordinance number O-06-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 8, Division 3, curfew of the Berkeley City Code to increase the age of minors subject to curfew from under sixteen to under seventeen years old. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Item number six, ordinance number O-07-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 3, Section 82-71, assault and assault and battery, domestic violence of the Berkeley City Code, to make assault and battery a ninety-three-day misdemeanor to correspond to the state law penalty. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Item number seven, ordinance number O-08-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82 and add Section 82-122 to Article 4 of the City of Berkeley Code to prohibit prowling about an alley or private premises in the nighttime without authority or permission from the owner. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Item number eight, ordinance number O-09-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 122, traffic and vehicles of the Berkeley City Code, to add Article 5, motor carrier safety. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Item number nine, ordinance number O-10-17. Matter of considering the second reading of an ordinance to amend Chapter 82, Article 7, Section 82-279, and add Section 82-284, offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Berkeley City Code, to designate the offense of carrying concealed weapons without a license as a misdemeanor and to prohibit possession or use of firearms or other dangerous weapons while under the influence of alcohol, liquor, or controlled substance. Full copy of this ordinance is posted for ten days at the Berkeley City Hall, Library, and Community Center. Item number 10, Resolution R-18-17. Matter of declaring the month of July is sarcoma awareness month, and July 15th, 2017 is leiomyosarcoma awareness day. Item number 11, Resolution Number R-19-17. Matter of recognizing Alan Simonian for his years of service in the community and to the Downtown Development Authority, DDA Board, and the Chamber of Commerce. And the last item is Resolution Number R-20-17. Matter of recognizing Diane Farrington for her years of service to the community and to the Downtown Development Authority, DDA Board.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Baker with support by Councilmember Turbrack. Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll?
Gravelin.
Yes.
Kedekel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now we come to the regular agenda. Ms. Shera, would you please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda?
Recognizations and presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked our Mayor Pro Tem to read R-18-17.
Thank you, Your Honor. It's my great pleasure to read a resolution of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring the month of July 2017 as sarcoma awareness month and July 15, 2017, as leiomyosarcoma awareness day. Whereas, a soft tissue sarcoma is a rare type of cancer, accounting for approximately 1% of all newly diagnosed cancers, that arises in the connective tissues of the body. And whereas, the National Institutes of Health designates sarcoma as a rare form of cancer, with sarcoma containing approximately seventy different subtypes. And whereas, sarcomas are largely resistant to current chemotherapy agents, immunotherapy agents, and radiation therapies, posing a formidable challenge for researchers and specialists. And whereas, sarcoma subtypes have largely not received benefit from immunotherapies due to the complexity of the DNA, genomes, and mutations associated with the many variations in the sarcoma subtype landscape. And whereas, leiomyosarcoma, referred to in this preamble as LMS, is a malignant, aggressive subtype of soft tissue sarcoma derived from smooth muscle tissues or smooth muscle cells, typically of the uterine, gastrointestinal, or soft tissue origin, and can metastasize to the bone, spine, brain, and liver. And whereas, the National Institutes of Health has classified LMS as a rare disease, accounting for approximately 15% of all sarcomas. And LMS itself encompasses at least four different LMS subtypes within. And whereas, LMS primarily affects adults, but there are no gender boundaries, and research and clinical trials remain complicated, and the survival and longevity remains difficult. And whereas, multidisciplinary care coordination teams, because of their expertise and experience, are critical to the health of sarcoma and LMS patients. And whereas, sarcoma and LMS research will allow medical professionals to improve the quality of care for affected patients, lead to better clinical outcomes, and promote longer survival for patients. And whereas, increased education and awareness about sarcoma and LMS will contribute to the well-being of the communities of the United States. And whereas, the city of Berkeley is strongly dedicated to preserving the health of its residents of the city and is supporting the fight against sarcoma and LMS. And now therefore, the city of Berkeley declares, or resolves, Section 1, that the members of the Berkeley City Council declare the month of July 2017 as sarcoma awareness month and July 15th, 2017, as leiomyosarcoma awareness day here in the city of Berkeley. We encourage increased public awareness and promotion of treatment and recovery. And, Section 2, that we hereby recognize and express our gratitude to the individuals, families, friends, and caregivers dealing with LMS, as well as the doctors and researchers who are seeking a cause or cure, and we laud the efforts of the Leiomyosarcoma Direct Foundation and the National LMS Foundation to assure the development of the means to cure and control LMS and to improve the quality of life for those with this disease until a cure can be found. Introduced and passed at a regular meeting of the City Council of Berkeley on Monday, June 19th, 2017, Dr. Phil O'Dwyer, Mayor.
Steve. I see our state representative has something to say along those same lines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. Along those same lines, I have a resolution here that was voted on and passed by the House of Representatives, House Resolution Number 128, a resolution to declare July 9th through 15th, 2017, as Sarcoma Awareness Week and July 15th, 2017, as Leiomyosarcoma Awareness Day in the state of Michigan. And I won't read through all this because it's quite similar to what you have, you've adopted here, but I'll read the last part as well. "Resolved by the House of Representatives that the members of this legislative body declare July 9th through the 15th, 2017, as Sarcoma Awareness Week and July 15th, 2017, as Leiomyosarcoma Awareness Day in the state of Michigan. We recognize the challenges faced by sarcoma and leiomyosarcoma patients and commends the dedication of organizations, volunteers, researchers, and caregivers across the country working to improve the quality of life of sarcoma and leiomyosarcoma patients and their families." Adopted by the House of Representatives on June 15, 2017, and signed by the clerk of our House of Representatives, Gary Randall. And so I wanted to present this here today for all of you, and then also just speak briefly. And, you know, this is a disease, a terrible disease, that impacts some people here personally. And if not personally, then you are friends with someone that might be dealing with this. And so creating awareness and investing in research and doing all that we can to find a cure for this disease is so important. So it's really great that we are doing this here in the city of Berkeley, as well as I was honored to be the lead sponsor of this in Lansing for our State House of Representatives. So it's my honor to bring this and present this to you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just like to add the heroic work that our Mayor Pro Tem is doing to bring LMS awareness to the nation. Your work in Lansing and in Washington will help advance the research and the funding for that research that will hopefully bring a cure and ease the minds of so many people who suffer from this very rare disease. So we thank you for representing our city in such a sterling and fantastic way with a cause that is dear to all of us. Then we move along to the next item. Ms. Shera, would you please read item number...
Second.
Second, number two.
Ordinance number 0-11-17. Matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance to add Section 122-95 to Article 4 of Chapter 122, Traffic and Vehicles of the City of Berkeley Code of Ordnances to Require Vehicles Parked on a Street, Highway, or Municipal Parking Lot to Have a Valid Registration Plate.
Is there a motion to approve ordinance 1117?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard with support by Councilmember Kedekel. Mr. Baumgau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we saw last meeting, we are continuing to work on updating our ordinances in order to make them the most actionable, give them the most actionable text possible. This is another one of those updates. Both our city attorney's office as well as our police department have been working on this. And Chief North is here to add any items if there's anything. But as the title implies, in order to be parked in any public space, there needs to be a valid license, or the vehicle would be subject to fines and penalties.
Any discussion on this item? Chief, add anything to that?
Yes, I'd just like to thank the city manager and especially the city attorney's office for working with us on this. I know it's a lot to read, and we thank Cindy for filling in today and reading all those words. It's a matter of catching up and becoming current. These things have to be brought up every now and then, and it's being done. So we thank everybody for their help who's been helping us with this. And it gives us another level of enforcement. We run across things from time to time. Action needs to be taken, but we don't necessarily have the right words in the ordinance. So we live and learn as we go, and we keep it going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll on ordinance 1117?
Kedekel.
Yes.
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravelin.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
And now, Ms. Shera, would you please read item number three?
Motion number M-47-17. Matter of approving an amendment to the city's fee schedule to include a backyard chicken permit fee in accordance with ordinance number O-02-17, Chapter 22, animals with an effective date of July 5th, 2017.
Is there a motion to approve M-47-17?
Motion to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Stedman.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Gravelin. Mr. Baumgau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now that the backyard chicken ordinance, pilot's ordinance, has gone through, it's received a first and second reading, and it's time now to assign a fee schedule for anyone who is interested in getting the five permits that will be allowed by council for the next twelve months. The fee is set at eighty dollars. That covers the city's cost in administering this pilot project, and that does cover the cost of two inspections throughout the pilot project year. Again, we, the city is not able to gain any revenue from any of its fees, so this is set in a manner just to cover the city's costs. So it comes before you today for your consideration.
Any discussion? Councilor Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question. How does this compare with some of the other cities in our area that also have chicken ordinances? Do you know?
We actually looked at this as strictly as what our cost would be to administer it. We didn't end up comparing it to some other cities. One of the things that we may want to do as the pilot projects come to a close is to see if there are any other areas where we need to cover some costs, and then we could look at some other cities. But this strictly will get us through the two inspections and permitting process needed for our pilot.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just curious, has there any early takers on this so far? Any people knocking on the door or...
We've gotten some early inquiries. The effective date of July 5th is significant because it is thirty days after the second reading, which actually lands us right on the Fourth of July, and the first day will be open after that is the Fifth of July. So we will not allow any permits or not approve any permits until that date. And we have a, we will have the, basically, the application materials ready to go at that point. So that's when we'll allow permitting.
Thank you. Seeing no one else weighing in on this, then Ms. Boucher, would you please call the roll on M-47-17?
Stedman.
Yes.
Turbrack.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Blanchard.
Yes.
Gravelin.
Yes.
Kedekel.
Yes.
O'Dwyer.
Yes.
Now, Ms. Shera, would you please read item number four?
Motion number M-48-17. Matter of approving the Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program, purchase of a 2017 Ford F-250 pickup at a total cost of $25,090 from Signature Ford of Owasso, Michigan.
Is there a motion to approve M-48-17?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Kedekel. Mr. Baumgau.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our Department of Public Works continues to fulfill its capital and equipment replacement program. This process, this bid comes to you as noted from a Macomb County Cooperative Bid Program, which we are still able to have access to as an Oakland County program. So Derek and his staff do a fantastic job of searching for the best deal to gain the best value for the community. So Derek, you want to speak a little bit about what the use for this vehicle would be?
Sure, thank you, Matt. This is a replacement vehicle for a 2014 vehicle that was damaged in an accident, damaged beyond repair. So this is a replacement vehicle for a 2014 F-250. And as you've seen in my notes, we paid approximately $20,000 back in 2013. And as you've seen in my notes, we paid approximately $20,000 back in 2013 for the vehicle, and we did receive a check for the damage in excess of $20,000 for this damaged vehicle. So, this goes to show the value of this Macomb County purchasing program where we receive a significant discount over MSRP in excess of $10,000 on this particular vehicle. So, we're replacing it with a 2017, basically the same version. There have been some price increases from Ford, but they're aluminum body now and some other upgrades that are going into the vehicle. But it's a bid program that we definitely like to purchase from, and I know other departments do as well. So, I'm happy to answer any questions on this.
Questions? Should have, but I really, I really don't.
Yeah, right.
Councilmember Kadeko?
Thank you, Mr. Shera. I just wanted to make sure that everybody was okay, nobody was hurt.
Yes, everybody was okay, but it's the front end of this 2014 Ford sustained considerable damage. So, the adjuster came out and determined it to be a total loss. So, but thankfully, everyone was okay.
Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Your Honor. Following up on that, is there delivery time involved with this? Are there customizations or modifications required to it? Or they just peel the sticker off and put on the plate and away we go?
It's not quite that simple, based on a couple of the options that we have. So, it will be a truck, a base truck that will be coming off the line, and then they'll be adding a couple of things to it. But our experience has been with working with Signature Ford that within a couple of weeks, we hope to have this vehicle.
Councilmember Grablin?
Are these all the same options that were on the truck that we lost?
Yes, I do believe there's one change with a plug, a plug-in feature that Sean had mentioned to me, but otherwise, internal to the cab, something that you could plug in devices to for charging purposes, but otherwise, it was the same.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll on M-48-17?
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grablin?
Yes.
Kadeko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes. And now, Ms. Shera, would you please read item number five?
Motion number M-49-17, matter of approving the purchase of official Dream Cruise merchandise at wholesale for a cost not to exceed $28,000 and sell it at full retail. Funds for this expenditure will come from account 614-915-818-000.
Is there a motion to approve M-49-17?
Move to approve.
Approved by Councilmember Kadeko?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Grablin. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Dream Cruise Committee continues to do fantastic work. Dream Cruise Fest is just around the corner, actually. Time of year where we purchase our apparel that'll be put out for sale throughout the week of, the day of Dream Cruise and Cruise Fest. We're joined by Mark Boone, our Parks and Rec Director, who are the two who work to give you some more information on it.
So, you've seen this agenda item every year before you to approve merchandise that will then be sold along Woodward and also under the marquee. The night of Cruise Fest, we'll start pre-sales the week before Dream Cruise on August 11th. We'll continue those through the weekend and through the week, and that has been very successful for us. We're hopeful for good weather always. Dream Cruise, we see our sales go up and looking forward to seeing what merchandise we have to offer this year and looking forward to another successful Cruise Fest and Dream Cruise. And working with Mark and working with the Cruise Fest Committee is always a smooth process and something that we're all really excited to continue this year.
Yes, generally, I have a sheet for you guys that's the break-even analysis. Unfortunately, this year, because Chevrolet pulled out, we don't know what our merchandise looks like, and we don't know any of the price points yet. So, that will be forthcoming. I'm certain because of past, years in the past, it's always hovered around the save, you know, about the same. We need to sell about 40% of the merchandise in order to break even. I don't see an issue with that. We've been talking about some other such things that we can do to help, you know, get more of the merchandise out earlier so that, you know, we can cover our basis, so to speak, so that we don't have any hiccups. I know that $28,000 this year, we had lowered it last year because of that. I'm really happy that we have it a little bit lower this year because in years past it was $32,000. And the reason is, is because we don't know what we're going to get. We don't, we haven't had, usually when I'm standing up here, I know what it looks like, and I can't say I don't. I'm sure it'll be great, but you just never know. So, in that regard, I think that, but we will be fine. And, you know, things have been going swimmingly. We have a, we have a lot done, we have a lot more to do yet, and we're getting bands together and all that type of thing. So, we're well on our way to getting there, even though it seems like it's a long ways. Seven weeks isn't very long. So, if you have any other questions, we'd be glad to answer them.
Listen, Councilmember Kadeko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you both for the work you do. I enjoyed being a part of that committee for many years. Teresa, is there any update as to a new sponsor or anything?
WDC is working overtime on that, and I think that you should be hearing something this week. It's nothing that I can confirm now, but the people who do run WDC, obviously I'm a member of the board, but we have people who do the marketing and that sort of thing, have been working very hard on that, and we hope to have good news any day now.
Stay tuned.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thanks to you guys and to the committee for the tremendous, excellent work. It is so well orchestrated and designed that the play runs so smoothly. You continue to improve it every year, and we're very excited this year as well. And just to be clear, the Chevrolet sponsorship isn't for Berkeley in particular, it's for the whole, the whole Dream Cruise, right? As you had mentioned, the WDC initiative, it affects the entire entirety of the cruise.
Right, and the reason Mark mentioned that is because they were the ones that the merchandise has to do with, and obviously, we're approving the funds for the merchandise, but with Chevy pulling out, but it doesn't have anything to do with Cruise Fest and everything that happens with Cruise Fest.
Right, excellent. And I'm sure you'll hit that sweet spot. I remember it being like even before Dream Cruise, like that Thursday or Friday, before the actual cruise, we're already in the money.
Usually is, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's excellent, and weather permitting, we'll far exceed that again this year. So, thank you again, everybody.
Thank you both, and thank you to everybody else on the committee as well who worked so hard to make this just a fantastic event, a signature event for our city. And it shows the preparation, the diligence, and the care, and we thank you all for doing that. And with that, Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll on M-49-17?
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grablin?
Yes.
Kadeko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Ms. Shera, would you please read item number six?
Resolution number R-22-17, matter of authorizing the execution of a professional services letter of engagement with Gabriel, Roder, Smith, and Company to perform actuarial services of retiree healthcare and other retiree benefits for the purposes of implementing Governmental Accounting Standards Board Statement Number 74.
Is there a motion to approve R-22-17?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Grablin?
Support.
Support by Councilmember Stedman. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little bit of background, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board is the approving body for best practices for municipalities across the entire country. They have rolled out a couple of years ago, but now it is time to implement their Rule Number 74, which is a reporting standard for gauging what the city's outstanding OPAB or other post-employment benefits obligations are. And they're reported, despite the fact that it is a long payout period, they're reported as a single number for you. We need to have this number calculated on our behalf, and so Gabriel, Roder, Smith, and Company actually works with us on the public safety pension side and can do this work for us for the amount specified here. Our Finance Director is able to give a little bit more information on that, but I wanted to offer a little bit of background.
Thank you. So, as the City Manager mentioned, this is a beefed-up version of GASB 43 and 45, if you're following the GASBs. So, a lot of it is just, it beefs up the footnotes, very similar to how we did that on the pension side several years ago, and also brings forth that liability to, I call in the front of the statements, our full-acquired statements. So, now that number will appear as a liability on our front statements. This used to be required every three years, and it is required that we have an actuary calculate the number. I cannot do it myself, I'm not qualified. So, GASB does say unless you have less than 100 plan members, you need to have an actuary do the calculation. So, that is why we are having an actuary perform it. It used to be every three years, now it will be a requirement for every two years. So, you will see this coming forth more often. And they did give us two options, an option one and an option two. We did talk with our auditors, and they were very fortunate that they did say that we could go with option two, which is $17,000 compared to a $20,000 calculation. So. Question?
Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. $17,000 is a pretty good-sized hit for us. Is this going to happen every two years, or will the price go down over time because they've already done part of it? Or, you know, I know the answer, I think. That's
Right, so for what I'm seeing, that's a pretty standard number. The first year might be a little bit more expensive just because there are some newer requirements that the GASB has thrown in there compared to in the past, but I would be surprised if it comes down much. I want to say in the past, the calculation has cost us between 13 to $15,000. So, I don't see it coming down much, but there's always hope.
Many things come down.
No.
Right.
Any other questions on this? Seeing none, then, Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll on R-22-17?
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grablin?
Yes.
Kadeko?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Shera, would you please call item number 11?
Resolution number R-23-17, matter of authorizing the execution of an agreement between the City of Berkeley and Oakland County to provide information, technology services, IT, to the City of Berkeley.
Is there a motion to approve R-23-17?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Baker with support by Councilmember Turbrack. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is an item that you are probably accustomed to seeing each, every so often. We do have an existing relationship with Oakland County's IT Division. What is new to this document is actually the expansion into over-the-counter credit card transactions through their G-to-G or government-to-government program. We've been talking about ways in order to and allow for people to not have to go back out to the car or to the home to get their checkbook to pay a bill with the city. Actually allow credit cards to be swiped at the counter as you find, pretty standard across most of the private sector. For actually, of all people to be able to do this, you'd be surprised to find that Oakland County is actually on the cutting edge of offering this through a partnership that they had initially launched in Grand Rapids. So, that's how G-to-G was born. Rest of it details their internet provision for public safety, as well as the Clemens Program, which Chief North, of course, discussed. But Sabrina and her staff have done quite a bit of work to get this in front of you today in order to catch us up, let's say, with private sector counterparts. So, I don't know if there's any other items to add on that or not.
Sure, I think just a couple of benefits to mention is we currently use official payments. Unfortunately, as the City Manager mentioned, we cannot take those payments over the counter. So, this will allow us to have that technology. Oakland County does supply all of the equipment that we will need, so there is no out-of-pocket cost when it comes to that. They will provide us training as well. We also looked at comparisons of what official payments charges currently compared to what G-to-G fees will be, and what we concluded is there is a savings if your water and sewer bill is $100 or less, it is actually favorable to use G-to-G. If it's greater than that, you will pay a little bit more for using your credit card, but there is a significant tax savings if you want to use your credit card and incur those fees. So, if your tax bill is $10,000 or less, it is actually favorable to use G-to-G and put on your credit card. Again, there still is a fee associated with it. So, again, as a user, just like I use an example of when you go to the ATM, I know in my bank statement, when I swipe my card, it shows I took out $100 in one transaction, and the second transaction shows a $1, $2 fee for using the ATM. This will appear very similar on a customer's statement. They will see a charge to the City of Berkeley for the $100 water bill as one charge, and they'll see a second charge of whatever it may be, $3 to Oakland County. So, they'll see two separate charges. When they do run their credit card, they will be asked, "Do you approve this service fee, yes or no?" So, again, it's very user-friendly, very similar to an ATM transaction.
Questions, discussion on this item? Councilmember Blanchard?
Thank you, Your Honor. Looking at the fee schedule, it's kind of confusing. Are we coming under the enhanced access via Oakland County column, or do we, how do we figure that?
Yes, that will be our new service.
We just use this one? We don't?
It was just a point of comparison to show what we pay currently, our customers pay currently as a fee for official payments, which is just online payments that they can make.
Okay, that makes a lot of sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Grablin?
The service fee, it also states we're getting 50% of that back to the city?
That is correct. So, that is one of the benefits of G-to-G is they will take, Oakland County being they, will take 50% of the fee that the customers pay and reinvest it into their technology, and then they do cut a check back to the local governments that use their program. So, we in the city hope to reinvest whatever funds we do get returned to improve our Treasury Department. So, right now, we don't have a computer at the front desk where residents can come in and easily look up their tax information. So, we hope to reinvest some of that money in things like that.
Thank you.
Good. Anybody else? Very good. Thank you. Oh, with Mayor Protem?
Sure, thank you, Your Honor. Thanks again. So, thanks for helping ensure that the residents have some savings with this new program, based on the price point that they need to cover. And also, I'm glad the point was made about the portion of that fee coming back to the city so that we can reinvest that in the community here as well. So, this covers both in-person payments and then also online, right? So, can you kind of talk a little bit more about the spectrum from, you know, online payments and as well as the in-office payments?
Sure. So, currently, we do not have the capacity to take credit card here at the city. So, if you were to come in, we only accept cash or check. So, again, we're kind of coming into the age of technology, being able to pay with credit card here at City Hall, as well as online. So, for tax purposes, official payments, we've only allowed customers to pay online for tax for the first two months of the tax year. So, again, now we're opening it up, and again, it's kind of an issue that we have with using our BSNA software in Oakland County, kind of being our assessor is why we have that cutoff. But, so again, we won't have that problem anymore with Oakland County kind of being our gatekeeper of our tax records, as well as now is our credit card information. So, you will be able to pay with your credit card throughout the entire tax season, not just June, or I'm sorry, July and August. It expands it, which I think is great.
Sure, more options. And the second part of this has to do with the Clemens Program. Can you talk about that a little bit?
I would actually defer to Chief North on the Clemens Program. [laughing] No. Right.
Adding additional features? Will our folks need training on those new features, those types of things?
No, they're almost tutorial in nature. And they frequently update, well, some people have updated the policy.
Sure. Sure.
But anyway, going forward and using these programs is beneficial to the department and as a result of that, beneficial to the community.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. There's another whole list of other functions other than Clemens, like R-GIS Online and Website, Web Publishing Suite. Are those things that we've had in the past, or are that all something new that we're going to be able to take advantage of?
We're hoping to take advantage of that, so we've had our, we had Stan, our IT expert, take a look at the contract as well, and again, those are all things that we're hoping will just enhance the services that we can provide to the city. One of the things that the county has said that they can assist with as well is having those links from our website straight to theirs. So again, if a resident's out on our website looking for some information, it's very easy for them to click that link and go to the county and find the information they're looking for. So all good things, all enhancements that we're hoping to provide.
I think the GIS is more important now, since we've got the SAW grant, and we have more GIS information, that we'll have a better method of using, I believe. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Councilwoman Grevelin.
Last question, regarding the training, is public safety's up on it, but the Treasury Department will need to be trained?
They will.
And that is included in this contract, or is it an additional cost?
Yeah, it's all part of the contract, yes. They supply the hardware that we will need, they supply the software, and they also supply the training for us, all included.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Seems like this adds efficiency and convenience across the board. Seems like a wonderful thing. Ms. Sheriff, would you please call the roll on R-2317?
Grevelin?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Sheriff, would you please read item number eight?
Resolution number R-24-17, matter of authorizing the amendment of the 2016-2017 operating budget.
Is it a motion to approve R-2417?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Stedman, with support by Councilmember Turbrack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our budget year closes out at the end of this month, so we're really in, as the director said, the home stretch of this budget year. So as is our standard practice, we're coming to you with the last quarterly budget amendment. There may be some other ones as we close out this budget year, but this is our routinely scheduled one. The amounts are outlined, as well as the affected line items and funds in your packet, and our finance director can tell you a little bit more about them.
I think for me, seeing these budget amendments was a positive. When I looked at where we were year-to-date, compared to what the budget was, revenues are coming in higher than what we expected. A lot of that is related to licenses and permits. Again, just with the activity happening here at the city, it's all great news, so those have been increased, still try to be very conservative, and not say, "We're going to have a stellar last month," but tried to be very conservative in those estimates, again, just to make sure we come in at projection. We also talked about an increase with the traffic fines as well. So again, when I was looking at previous history from July through March, our traffic fines are the fees that we get returned from Royal Oaks District Court. They were coming in around twenty-two thousand dollars a month, so it looked like we were going to be too high in our original budget. In March, actually, it's probably February, we sent out garnishments for past dues, and because those garnishments end up hitting the Michigan State Tax Return, or Income Returns. So with that being sent out, we actually had more of an influx in revenue for the past two months. So again, I think that is coming in a little bit higher than I was anticipating, based on the history I had seen through March, so great news there. Expenses, I think, again, we tried to be as conservative as possible. A lot of it was just moving money around between departments within the general fund. I think the biggest change was, as Derek had talked about, with the vehicle for DPW. Major and local streets, again, a lot, not a whole big change there. A lot of it, again, is just moving money around. We had some savings from winter maintenance, we had a nice light winter, hopefully I don't jinx it, but, so again, we had some savings there, which we could reallocate some funds to our street tree program being the biggest one. Our drug forfeiture fund, we maintained around three thousand dollars in drug forfeiture money, and we were able to reallocate some funds from the general fund into drug forfeiture and use those money on the tasers that we recently purchased. So we now are down to zero in that fund, but it was nice to be able to use money that had just been sitting there for several years. Recrevolving fund, again, just moving some of the revenues around. Our youth camp revenues were up, so again, great news that that program is, I think, really thriving. The last big highlight related to the budget was in regards to the DDA. So we used to have two DDA funds, which we talked about during our budget session. This budget amendment here is combining all of those funds, so now we will just maintain one DDA fund that tracks both the DDA capture as well as the DDA lobby. Are there any questions on amendments?
No questions?
No.
Thank you very much for careful management of our accounting and our finances. We appreciate that very much. Ms. Bouch, would you please call the roll on R-24? Oh. Oh, that's right, Ms. Sheriff. All happens to die hard.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grevelin?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Sheriff, would you please read item number nine?
Resolution number R-25-17, matter of setting charges for water and sewer services effective July 1, 2017.
Is it a motion to approve R-2517?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Councilmember Blanchard, with support by Councilmember Kodeckel. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is actually an opportunity to correct something that was omitted from the previous item that came before you on this topic. This affects the commercial side only, this is not a residential charge, but there is an additional charge that needs to be added to our businesses in order to cover stormwater runoff, basically, or, actually, I'll let the finance director explain a little bit more, because it covers a very specific section.
Sure, so this is just an update to our previous rate, so the Great Lakes Water Authority had not issued their final rates for their industrial waste charges when we did our previous amendment, so we tried to do the best with what we were provided. So these are the true final numbers from GLEWA, they are simply a pass-through charge, and every community issues these as a pass-through charge. So again, just final numbers to be effective as of July 1st. No other rates were changed, everything is the same as it was previously.
Very good. Seeing any, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, and again, just to clarify, this is on the commercial side, not on the residential side.
It is only on the commercial side.
Thanks, and this is just to kind of tidy up the paperwork, because we needed those final numbers of the pass-through from folks that have the say on those kinds of things.
Absolutely correct, yes, just to update final numbers, now that we finally have them from Great Lakes Water Authority.
Perfect, thank you.
Very good. Ms. Sheriff, would you please call the roll on R-2517?
Stedman?
Yes.
Turbrack?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Grevelin?
Yes.
Kodeckel?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
And now, Ms. Sheriff, would you please read item number 10?
Work Session, matter of discussing the proposed Community and Economic Development Director position.
Is it a motion to approve the work session?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Councilwoman Kodeckel, with support by Councilmember Blanchard. Mr. Baumgarten.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to give an update as to the staff work that has gone on concerning converting our building and planning department over to rebranding it and reorganizing it, and in general, refocusing it into a community development program. So I wanted to...
We need the IT guy?
Tell who it's not, it's me. And Stan told me it was going to be really easy to... I hear it's starting to come up, so.
It's coming up.
It's coming up right now. So this is, as we like to do, a work session to kind of outline where we're at in this progress. This is not at any means a final proposal, but I wanted to make sure that the direction that staff is heading was consistent with the desire of council. Each and every one of you have done, I think, an admirable job pushing staff to get to a better situation with how we administer this particular function of the city, and I thank you for all that, and you've been by no means complacent in knowing that there's items that need to be addressed. So I want to make sure that, again, staff is reporting out in a prompt manner where we're at in this. So what you have in front of you is a hard copy version of what we're presenting here, so I'm going to go through a couple of different salient points for you. First and foremost, you'll notice the Community Development Department. One of the things that we've been discussing internally is the appropriateness of the Community and Economic Development. The city manager's office has traditionally been at the forefront of the economic development's functionality. I would like to keep that unchanged. It runs well with my particular background and what I've done with various communities in the past, and the economic development function for this department would be, of course, after myself or our DDA director brings in some new development, some interested party, the Community Development Department would take them through the city's processes in an efficient manner, in order to get a final determination of whether or not that development or that business is appropriate, depending on the situation. That is where it can be, that is where this department can yield the most promising work for an economic development standpoint, and I'll get to the, talk a little bit more on that when we get to some of the goals in just a moment. So the community development right now is currently organized into a city planner, clerical staff, the building code administration, which includes the building official, trade inspectors, and to a large extent, the fire marshal, who reviews building plans and such for compliance with the National Fire Code. It also includes our code enforcement officer, who is actually, we have one code enforcement officer, then the fire marshal, when need to, actually kind of pinch hits, if you will, for the code officer, when to cover time off or vacations, or since he's a part-time individual, if a code complaint comes in during the time at which he's not in the office, the fire marshal steps over, investigates that, but does not routinely go on patrol, like our code enforcement officer does. So we have an opportunity there. Getting into some of the goals, what we want to try to do is expand staff capacity to address pertinent issues in our community, and those, as we know, run a large gamut from, just generally speaking, code violations, to some of the basis for our enforcement and the ordinances. As this department has become busier and busier in the last couple of years, we need to have the capacity to expand and contract based on what the workload is. Right now, we're in expansion mode, and it's important to note that there is a lot to do in order to keep up with where that expansion has already taken us. Next item would be to review and update, as needed, the city's guiding documents, such as zoning codes, ordinances, and the community master plan, to ensure they are meeting the needs of the resident. As council will recall, and we approved the 1718 budget, but also tentatively took a look at a second year out in the 1819 budget, and we have a community master plan, a comprehensive master plan update, tentatively budgeted for the 1819 budget year. So we know that this is coming down the pike, and as we recall, last time, I believe it was like a two-year process to get to the point where we brought a document in front of the city council. We anticipate a similar timeline, because the basis for any great community master plan is community, and gaining residents' input on that is going to be the bulk of what we do in order to produce a document for the council to consider. Next up would be implementing aggressive approach to enforcing community standards. I think we've talked about this quite a bit over the last, last year or so that I've been here, I know, and probably this conversations have gone on well before I began with the City of Berkeley. It lasts, but in no particular order, provide better communication on departmental activities and its processes. In my mind, this is probably number one, but opinions may vary on that, of course. Again, the opportunity to provide some idea of how we bring developments through a defined process, what the defined process is, what various actions by this department or any of the boards that fall underneath it, whether it be a planning commissioner, zoning board, what they're doing from any given time and the effect that that has on the community as a whole. Those are some of my goals for communication on this, and I think they've been consistent with the feedback I've gotten from city council, I hope. This is primarily a personnel-driven reorganization, so I want to start by discussing our staffing. The full-time staff under the proposal that you have in front of you would include the two existing clerk positions. The clerical staff includes one permits clerk and one licensing clerk. Just as you can imagine, one tends to handle building department's clerical needs, and the other one handles like business and licensing. As you know, if you consider about licensing, everything that we have, from businesses to, in about a month, chickens, are all would be routed through the licensing clerk. The change here, and the largest change, I feel, is the Community Development Director is being proposed as a full-time position. Some of the reasons why we feel that the rationale exists for making that status change is giving the opportunity to review and update, they would review and update, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself, review updates to the city's code of ordinances. As we've discussed throughout the last year or so, ordinances need to be, in essence, a living document. As you can see, even our own police department, our public safety department, goes through the similar process, where they make sure that updates are meeting the needs of the community and consistent with state law. I think that's one of the things that our Community Development Director would have to go through in its initial couple of years here. Next up would be reengage the MEDCs, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation's Redevelopment Ready Communities Program, and that's not their, that's not our name, that's theirs. So the RRC program, for short, is, has become now the threshold for participating in any MEDC programs. So any community that wants to utilize some sort of economic development funds at the state level, needs to be at some level engaged in the RRC program, whether it is by acknowledgement that we're going through a self-assessment, whether it is by formal review by MEDC staff, or whether it is being a certified RRC community, you need to be somewhere in that. And they just rolled that out within the last year or so. It has gotten some pushback, but as of now, they are resolute in making this the minimum threshold for participation in the MEDC program, so the director would need to move on becoming engaged in that program. We would start with the self-assessment, and anybody interested, looking at more of that program. If you search MEDC, RRC certification, you'll see what those best practices are for local governments. Next one, convert the city's master plan recommendations into an implementation strategy. Our 2007 master plan and its amendments are still the guiding documents for much of what we do. There are recommendations that have existed over the last couple of years that have yet to be implemented in a tangible way, and so as we move into deciding what our next steps are going to be with our 1819 Community Master Plan, we need to make sure that we are understanding of what is left undone, what still needs to be done, and what we can feasibly do or roll into the next master plan. So that would be one of the things that the director is, the city planner is not able to do right now, but the next director would be tasked with doing. And then, of course, the master plan update, tentatively scheduled for the 1819 budget year, developing a communication and engagement strategy that brings our residents into this process, and making sure that they are the guiding force behind the recommendations that are yielded by the master plan. So this is some of the items that we feel are going to keep the director busy, in addition to the regular, the regular job functions that are already being addressed by our current way of administering this department. Next up would be the part-time staff. We would, we currently have a code enforcement, one code enforcement officer. I recommend that at least one additional code enforcement officer be brought on, and we'll talk about the enforcement strategy in just a moment, but the intent is to cover, to move from between 24 and 28 hours in a week to about 36 hours in a week, and that would be six days at six hours a day, which would allow us to expand into Fridays and some code enforcement on Saturday. I would like this to be basically an afternoon. Our intent is to get like noon to six, or something like that. That gives the, our code enforcement officer opportunity to have face-to-face with as many residents as possible as they get home from the evening hours. You'll be greeted by the nice, friendly code enforcement officers, as they want to talk to you about the condition of the property. But also Saturdays would help us address any permit work that's going on in the weekends, whether it should be permit work and it's not, or it is and it's just not meeting the community's standards, but also, again, it allows us to face time with as many residents as possible, and allows us to have a face-to-face conversation instead of just some written notice or citation. We'll get to that if we need. We'll get to that if we need to, but smiles are just as effective sometimes, and a voice conversation with the resident can be just as effective at times. The third item, the Fire Marshal. While still being physically housed in the City Hall, we would recommend that this position be shifted to, under the Public Safety's umbrella. It is consistent with the fire duties that are already housed in Public Safety. Our incumbent person, Mr. Pete Kelly, also aids on fire investigations as well. So it would help, again, he already works with the Public Safety Department quite a bit. As it stands, Pete's been a longtime employee of the city, retired out of the Public Safety Department. So we feel that those are where some consistencies make a lot of sense there. And again, we'll talk about a little bit about the workload. You'll notice that we've actually come down a little bit from some of our previous conversations. We were talking about trying to get to the point where we were having a part-time code official work 36 hours or up to 30 hours, and then bringing another one on to do the same, so covering up almost 60 hours over the course of the week. Two items are, have gone into altering that to the, to the proposal you have in front of you today. One being that we feel, as Council's pointed out, there are some efficiencies that are needed to be gained in that department and how the code enforcement officer spends his time, how we can utilize technology and improve the workflow process to spend more time actually in the field than in the office, kind of satisfying some of the paperwork side of things. And just simply, we do, we need to be upfront that we do have some budgetary limitations on expanding this department too widely, too fast. As it stands now, we'll discuss the budget side of things. It's one of the items that we continue to try to come up with a better situation as far as the impact is this, because as of now, we are, as you know, the 1718 budget was completely balanced and not slated to dip into fund balance or not utilize fund balance at all. Expanding any part of the Community Development Department would, of course, put us in the need of utilizing fund balance. So we're trying to get there through efficiencies and enforcing the property maintenance codes, zoning codes, and Code of Ordinances. We can always expand in following years, but for now, we believe we're bringing to the City Council a proposal that is within their spirit, but also greatly improves the offerings and what our residents would see from a curb standpoint. This, I just got moved around a little bit, but we talked also about the oversight of the code officers, whether it is appropriate to move that function to the Public Safety Department. As of now, we think that it is actually most appropriate to keep them under the heading of the Community Development Department and shift only the Fire Marshal over. Some of the reasons for that is that initially, it seemed like an appropriate fit. Enforcement, enforcement, everybody wins. But code officers, the source of what they're, the source of the rules and the codes that they're enforcing come from not only the Community Development Office, but the City Clerk's Office. So having those officers nearby so that they can discuss the departments that either keep the code or make the amendments to it, they can discuss those openly, keep a running, open conversation with those. That would not be the case with the law enforcement side, who handles a different set of laws and standards in our community. Public Safety would, of course, be unfamiliar with any changes that are made, whether by this body or by the effect of court cases, different boards and commissions that handle these items. If it's not a non-police ordinance, they may not be as familiar with, with those updates. Or it may be, we may lose some time in relaying those, that information. And the, the most appropriate knowledge source, again, is either the Community Development Director, or it would also be the City Clerk as far as what the, what the codes are. So for these reasons, we feel that oversight is most appropriately, should, most appropriately remain with the Community Development Department. But we can always address this in the next, in the next conversation for the next budget, or if we understand that we're not gaining as much ground as we'd like with our efficiencies, then we can talk about making some changes there. Again, there is nothing about this that needs to be set in stone. We don't need to dig our heels in and just stick with something because we felt it was the best as of today when anything could change tomorrow. Next up would be our contractual employees, our building official and our trade inspectors, of course, our mechanical, our plumbing and our electrical inspectors. These, we're not proposing a structural change to the, to the way that these individuals are retained by the city. As of now, the structure of the contracts are such that the city actually sets the fees and the compensation rates, and we hire in the inspectors based on their qualifications and their certifications. So it is not like a single-purpose contract, such as a road paving contractor, where we go out and say, all right, who can do this for the cheapest amount possible? We actually, again, the city writes the standards, the city writes the contract, and we hire it in. So it's not like, it's not the city is losing out. These, these contracts are very carefully structured in a way that allows them to expand and contract based on the workload and the revenues for that department, thereby never allowing them to actually raise to a rate where the cities, or the, yeah, the city has to use general fund dollars to, to put forth this service to people. It should always be covered by the contract fee, the permit fees. So we're not, we're not proposing a large change in the structure of those contractual Again, the biggest part of this that is, continues to be problematic for administration as well as, of course, our Finance Director, is the budgetary constraints that come along with make, going from full-time to a, or going from part-time to a full-time director. Of course, a full-time director would come with full-time rate of pay as well as the full benefits program allowed for by our merit system, which all new, which all employees are, all full-time employees are subject to. Also, the expansion of code enforcement from our current offerings out to 36 hours a week, depending on how many hours are worked over the course of a year, would also mean a budget amendment for that as well. So these are two of the areas that staff will continue to, to work for you and try to find some ways in order to overcome these, these budgetary hurdles. What you have in there in front of you outlines what was in here, but wanted to make sure that it's a little bit more verbose, as I tend to be, as you can tell by this presentation here. So it's just an extension of that in writing. But that is the end of the slideshow we have. Again, like I said, in no means a final product for the City Council, but at least wanted to check in as staff ought to do with their elected officials. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item, any feedback? Councilmember Blanchard.
Thank you. I just had a question. You talked about the master plan. Is it a state requirement that we update that every so many years? And is that what we're due for in 1819? Master plan?
The answer is yes.
Okay. That's a five, five-year, do that every five years?
Yeah, so it needs to be at least addressed every five years in whether it is reaffirmed or altered in any way. We have been doing amendments throughout its, the history, which I think satisfies at least the standards from the state. But at this point, the 2007 plan is, is a decade old. It's an entire recession old, as well as a recovery old. So at least some of the financial assumptions, some of the population trends, those need to be updated, as well as, you know, make sure the recommendations are still consistent with the wants of the residents.
Thank you.
Councilmember Tobright.
I guess I'm, I'm looking for clarification, I think, from, from Council on what we're supposed to be discussing right now. So I know we have a work session, the, the agenda says the Director position because there's a whole lot more I feel like that we need to discuss, you know, as far as moving forward with this department and how it's structured. I don't, I didn't think and wasn't under the assumption that was supposed to be today necessarily. But if it is, while we're talking about code enforcement, I mean, I do have some concerns about that. But if we're just talking specifically about the position going to full-time, then okay, yeah, I'm good with that.
I started out, you know, gearing up to just talk about the Director, but wanted to make sure I offered as Council as much context as possible when we discuss the, particularly the rationale for a part-time versus a full-time Director. So that the Council was understanding of who they'd be providing oversight for, how many hours specific to code enforcement, and what the staffing levels would look like under the proposal that we're working towards, but.
Okay. So there's going to be another work session where we talk more specifically about the department and then, and, once we have the organizational structure in place, okay, we're going to have this person. Then we're going to have the opportunity to discuss what each of those people are doing.
Correct.
Specifically responsible for.
As well as up to detail as possible. Yes. I, again, I would not be asking the, the City Council for anything without budgetary impacts, but I just want to make sure that Council is aware that we are heading in the direction of going, probably exceeding the, the amount that we discussed previously with, with these additions.
You need feedback or consensus, at least, on the specific question of full-time, full-time role.
It would be preferred if Council has that, or if there are any outstanding questions that you'd like to see asked and answered prior to.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think if we're going to work with MDEC and RRC communities, it almost has to be a full-time position if we're going to get this done correctly. And as you say, if we want to play in the game with the state and take advantage of some of their monies that are available, then we have to do that. I don't think there's any way around it, really. Thank you.
I guess now I can actually comment on that. So, you know, whenever we have, in this case, a new position, or at least a new position that comes before us, we have to make a decision on whether it's good for the city to, to spend more to have time. And for us, you know, it's a question of weighing the time that that person does and, you know, what the needs of the city and the residents truly are. And in this case, especially with what's going on, I think there's, there's part of what we know and what we don't know. I think, you know, as, as things continue nationally and in the world to, to kind of evolve, I think more and more is going to be asked of that department. And I think, you know, that the things that we've already outlined and already spoke of, and there's going to be the unintended things that we haven't seen, we don't see coming down, that's going to be responsible, or that department, this Director's going to be responsible for. So it, it's certainly not something that, you know, we frivolously just say, oh, yeah, frivolous, yeah, let's, let's spend more money, sure, whatever. That's not the case. But I do think that it's critical in this department, just as it is in, in every department that we have a Director. Not a full-time Director because it's a very wise place for us to invest resources because it has such a significant impact on the city. So from that standpoint, as long as we have things in place to make sure the rest of the department runs smoothly.
Along those lines, it's a tough call to make, again, weighing the resources of the city. We're talking adding one person, but one and a half person with the new code enforcement officer as well as part of the package here. I, I personally would prefer to see us tighten up our communications piece in how we are communicating the activities and the processes within our building and code department, possibly before we consider the second code enforcement. Yes, there's more enforcing to be done, but we're still not doing a good job of conveying if you make a complaint or think, what, what happens next and when will that be resolved and how that, will that be resolved in a timely manner. I feel that needs to be addressed first, and maybe that does alleviate some of our code enforcement issues before we go right to adding another body and more budgetary resources needed.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Stedman.
Yes, I was going to say, I really like the idea of calling it a Community Development Director because for years, the City of Berkeley has been fairly stagnant in terms of new homes and developing and so on, and people tearing down old homes and putting on new ones. And right now, it seems to be just really changing quite a bit. And so instead of a planner, a community development person is what we need, and I do think we need this person full-time.
Pro Tem.
Thank you, Your Honor, and thank you for the, for the thoughtful materials, the presentation and guiding us through the conversations thus far and giving us some insights into where the, the city administration's thoughts are at, at the moment on this. Likewise, yeah, any additional dollar spent needs to be very thoughtfully considered, weigh the pros and cons of the, the benefits that any kind of, an additional role would entail. As you mentioned, a full-time employee has a different level of a commitment between the individual and the city than a contractual relationship or a part-time. And I think this is one of those situations where it's wise to, to pursue this very thoughtfully. In addition to providing the types of services that we've come to expect from our department today at an accelerated or higher level of quality of service, I think we've identified several ways in which, you know, additional services and value can be brought to bear through this department so that we're unable to realize, given our current staffing levels and, and amounts of funding. To sum it up, in addition to the communication, I'd say it's, it's about being proactive, getting out there and engaging with the residents, with the, with the community of municipalities around us to recognize that there's other planning going on and to be aware of what's going on there. And then to work within the team and within the other city departments to improve communication and partnership within and across the city. I think there's a lot of additional benefits to be had from, from getting more proactive and, and not just waiting for something to happen, but kind of getting out and involved. We're seeing tremendous success with that now with our DDA Director, getting proactive and involved and engaged and making positive progress rather than simply waiting for something to happen and responding. So for all those reasons and more, I think tonight's conversation focusing on our, our thoughts around the Director position, I, I'm leaning towards that, I think, with careful scrutiny, of course, but I think that, that feels like the right direction to go. And I look forward to further conversation around the structure of the department and the reporting alignment and, and those types of things as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kedden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was going to echo Mayor Pro Tem's sentiment. I, I like the idea of being proactive, having someone there that communicates. I always say communication can break you, make you or break you, and we need someone that's going to be strong in there and someone that's going to be there and, and have some foresight as to what's happening in the city. If you told us four years ago, we were going to have this big boom of homes, or five years ago, we would have left. And today, we've been, you know, I say plus that we've had, you know, the boom. So I think that would be the first step. As far as a code enforcer, enforcement, if you moved Pete Kelly over to the Public Safety, and then you brought in a second code enforcer, so basically, we're, we're a force, code enforcer, so basically, we're going to have an extra part-time employee. That would be it because where would Pete Kelly go if we didn't do this? Would he remain in the same position?
Yes, his permission, or his, his position would basically remain unchanged right now. If we ever got back to the point where the Fire Marshal workload was not as full, then perhaps he could take on more of a code enforcement role. As of right now, those duties being primary take up his schedule during the week.
Takes too much.
Yeah.
So it's almost like we're in need of another code enforcer because of his situation.
That, that was our feeling, yes.
Anybody else?
I just have one question. You said one code enforcement officer would work 30 hours.
Yeah, up to, up to, actually, 29 hours would be the cap under the current benefits.
Okay. And then, but I, I wasn't quite sure what the second person.
My apologies. So we'd have, our, our plan right now is to have one 24-hour code enforcement officer and then an additional one to cover two days, Friday and Saturday.
That would be the Friday, Saturday, 12 hours, right. Okay.
Well, it's not a, it's not as many hours as the current officer gets, but again, like I said, it does provide weekend coverage, which I do feel is lacking right now.
So there goes that plan of having garage sales on Saturday so nobody can take down the illegal signs.
I had no comments on that.
Good. Oh, Councilmember.
Just under the duties of the potential new full-time Director, you list the new master plan that needs to be done. Does that have to be contracted out? Could that be done in-house with the full-time position as a small savings? Or is that not recommended? Is that legally not favored?
No, it's, it's, it's fully possible. My recommendation would be to utilize a firm that could dedicate as much time as needed to this. It, I don't think it could be done while the full-time, even a full-time Director is utilizing their other duties as well. This is an intensive process.
Thank you.
Councilmember Kedden.
To the code enforcer on Saturday, I like that idea. We get enough emails from people that are doing things throughout the week and even on weekends where, you know, they don't see a code enforcer. And I, I think this would be better for the city, for the residents, to have some kind better for the city, for the residents, to have some kind of organization over the weekend.
So, I likewise favor that full-time community development director. I think that it comes down to commitment and ownership of the role. You know, when it's your full-time job, there's more loyalty and commitment to making it happen. That, you know, part-time people dedicate themselves as well. It's just that if you're at the top of the heap, if you're the director, you really need to be there all the time. So, for those reasons, I would certainly favor that full-time role. Now, is there anything else that you would like feedback on with regard to this matter?
Not at this time, Mr. Mayor.
Very good. Then we are ready to, is there anything anybody else wants to say on this before we move on? We'll be back to this matter again in a subsequent work session. Very good. So, we're ready then to move on to communications, and I believe, who's up? I think Councilmember Kiddekel is up for us.
Overdue.
I don't think I was, but I will be.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I want to thank the CAC for the work they did and the hours they put in and the, and just, you know, the time and effort that they put. I think it was great. We picked 15 individuals, and, you know, it was a great committee, and I'm definitely going to take their recommendations to heart. I want to thank everybody that's been so kind to me over the last couple of months, bringing me food and everything. I'm still not driving, but at least I made it here, and just the visits, the calls, the text messages are greatly appreciated. And former council member Bob Wheelock, he served council from 1973 to 1985, passed away on June 11th. He and his wife Helen, in 1985, moved up to Little Wolf Lake in Lewiston, Michigan, and that's where he retired. And I just wanted to bring that up. I wanted to give my condolences to the Wheelock and the Smith family, and they did ask me to mention that there will be a memorial service this Saturday at 12 noon at the Lewiston American Legion, so if anybody happens to be in that area. But he did serve 12 years with Art City, and our thoughts are with the family. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gretlann.
Want to give kudos to everyone involved with the Art Bash, Public Safety, and DPW for another Art Bash, successful Art Bash, and Lids for Kids, Public Safety, pardon me, another great day, as I say, by all, despite the heat. It was a really, really great event. Thank you to everyone for that. I'd like to thank my colleagues for cleaning up all those ordinances, and Mr. Kiddekel and I couldn't be here at the last meeting. The Tree Board met last Monday, and in the spirit of ordinances, they are looking very intently, line by line, at our tree ordinances to get those up to speed, more in line with what they'd like to see in the city, and in line with what other communities are doing. The Environmental Committee is meeting again. Their next meeting will be on Thursday, this Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:30 in the Public Safety Conference Room. And the Planning Commission, the public hearing, will be held next Tuesday, the 27th. The press release was just issued. It will be in this room, which I believe is due to the televised issue, was difficult to relocate. So, the public hearing will be next Tuesday, the 27th, at 7:30. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tebber.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to congratulate everybody involved in the very successful Art Bash, Public Safety, Lids for Kids, this past weekend. Phenomenal weather, and it just seems that those events, again, continue to get bigger and bigger every year. I know the Art Bash certainly, and Lids for Kids, there are just people everywhere, which was absolutely tremendous. It was a great day. Now that the kids are out of school and summer has officially kicked off, we have some Summerfest events. The first Summerfest event is happening Wednesday, this Wednesday, at Tot Lot, from 5:30 to Wear swimsuits, there's going to be some water, lots of fun. Bubbles, face painting, snow cones, sprinklers, all kinds of things. So, that's going to, that's the kickoff, that's our Summerfest kickoff, this Wednesday, 5:30 to 7:30 at the Tot Lot. Community garage sale this weekend, Friday and Saturday, certainly around the neighborhood and also at the community center. And prior to the next meeting, so we've senior day for Summerfest, or as part of the Summerfest is on July 12th. Please call the community center for times and more information. And Storytime in the Park will be at J.C. Park, July 13th, at 10 a.m. So, Summerfest is, summer's here, Summerfest is in full gear, and I hope to see everybody out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Baker.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple of quick updates as well. Our Downtown Development Authority, congratulations to them for their Art and About event. It's second Fridays of each month through October, and so the next one will be on Friday, July 14th, before our next meeting. And then followed immediately by the Street Art Fest the next day, on Saturday, the 15th. And again, my congratulations as well to those involved with the first of those, and of course, the Art Bash and the Lids for Kids, tremendous work there. Check out the DDA's website, which is downtownberkeley.com, and if you see either Alan Simonian or Diane Farrington, please extend our gratitude, as well as your own, for all that they've contributed to the DDA all these years, and helped continue to make this all that it is, and more. A couple of meetings ago, we talked about to work on Coolidge, and there will be some more conversation to come on that, but we are still exploring some potential crosswalks, at least one or two, to see what some options are, to make it safer for folks to get across that busy highway, which of course, I hope we can address that sometime as well. The Historical Committee, again, thanks for everybody for their involvement with the recent 85th anniversary book that was very well received, and the committee and others have received really good feedback on that. Come see more. Come to our Historical Museum. It's open most Sundays from 2:00 to 4:00, and on Wednesdays from 10 a.m. to 1 p.m. Feel free to bring any items that you'd like to share, or they have a pretty good process where they can scan in old artifacts and things, you know, photos and letters and things like that, and return the originals to you, and you can add that into the collection. So, thank you for that. And it was Roger Lewin who once said, "Too often we give children the answers to remember rather than problems to solve." Again, Roger Lewin said, "Too often we give children answers to remember rather than problems to solve." And we have lots of problems that need solving, and one of those was addressed by a very sharp group of students here in the Berkeley schools. We have a robotics program that I've spoken about on several occasions, the first robotics competitions, and this is another aspect of robotics that we haven't talked a lot about yet, but a Berkeley team won first place in the state and fourth in the world international competition for a pothole fixing robot. So, when you think about creativity that goes into that, I think that is fantastic. We can, as you guys know, our roads consistently rank among the five worst states in the nation, and so anything we can do and leverage the ingenuity of subsequent generations who are going to have to drive on these things someday. I love the thoughts there. And so, these folks at Ed Norup decided to tackle the problem. I want to say gratitude to Max Ferguson, Izzy Jansen, Ellie Haynick, and Max Rontal for their creativity and partnership, teamwork, ingenuity. Like I said, they won the state, they went to the Federals, the international contest was in Florida, the World Robo Fest contest. They went there and rocked it and came in fourth. What I love about this story, I mean, obviously, it's interesting trying to tackle real-world problems in creative ways, but what I celebrate most of all is the creativity, ingenuity, teamwork, and learning that comes out of these kinds of adventures. We have tremendous assets here in the city. Our schools and the students and the parents bring so much to bear, and this is yet another example of the quality of life that we have here, and very thankful for them. And next time, maybe you'll see a robot tool run to repair some of our potholes here. I think Harvard may have been a little bit too much for a robot to tackle, but sometimes you've got to bring in the pros.
Big robot.
A big robot. Anyway, thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Councilman Stedman.
Also, the Art Bash was great, and so was the Public Safety Open House, or the Lids for Kids. The only thing I missed, they used to have chili on the Lids for Kids. That building was empty. There was only a couple tables, and they weren't for chili. So, and also, my thanks goes out to both Alan Simonian and Diane Farrington. They've really had a, an incredible influence on the DDA for all these years, and so we need to thank them for their service. Check in with the library website. There's lots of things happening this summer, and they're all listed. If there's anything that you are interested in, though, sign up quick, because they've been filling up fast, you know? I mean, I've listed some of the numbers some evenings, and it's just amazing how quickly that their events fill. And the Beautification Committee, one thing, I mean, we always are looking for members. There's an unlimited membership, and I think we have five or six right now. But it's a working committee, but one of the things that we were looking at this last meeting last week was what are we going to do for our next project? We did notice that there was nothing right over there in that corner. There's just one little tree, and it could use some flowers. But if any of the residents see anything around the city, on city property, that needs a little touch of something, and the Beautification Committee might be able to help that out, let us know, you know, through email or phone call to one of the chairpeople. Okay? That's all.
Thank you. Councilwoman Blanchard.
Thank you, Your Honor. I want to thank everybody also for the Art Bash, but now I've got to move on to the next art event. For those of you that haven't seen the flyer, July 15th is the Berkeley Street Art Fest, and this is going to involve chalk art and murals, and we're looking for chalk art people out there. You don't have to be good, you just have to show up. There's four categories. Well, first of all, this professional and aspiring chalk artist will create colorful street art with chances to win prizes, okay? Commissioned artists will create murals on buildings throughout the city. Children will have opportunity to create art in the children's tent area. And participants of all abilities and ages are encouraged to help transform downtown Berkeley into vibrant color and work of art on July 15th. The four categories are adult, youth, teen, and family, and then there'll be a People's Choice Prize. So, if you're an adult, likes to draw with chalk, register, there's prizes. First prize is $400. If you're a youth, 12 to 17, the first prize is $75. If you've got neighbors or family and you pull together a team of four people, there's a first prize of $180. And then there'll, overall, will be a People's Choice Award of $300. So, it's for amateurs or people that want to try and get out there and do their thing, in addition to the murals that will be going on by the professional artists. And David Zen will be in town. He's a chalk artist who will be doing chalk art drawings to show you what you could do if you were really, really good. And to register, you go to berkeleystreetartfest.com. So, it should be very interesting, should be a lot of fun. So, if you can get some people that like to draw, get together, get a team, and head down there. It will be on the Dorthea and the parking lot behind Coolidge is where most of this will take place. Hopefully, as over the years this gets bigger, we'll expand to other areas of the city. So, the other thing is, this is still June, it's still Gun Safety Awareness Month. The Public Safety Department still has gun locks. If you would like one, you need one, go to Public Safety Department, they're free. And last, I'd like to comment on something that was in the Daily Tribune. The best of the, best of the Best Readers' Choice Awards. We've got a bunch of them here. For Coney Island, the Caligra Coney Island, it was Berkeley A&amp;W was number one. For pizza, Silas was number three in the ranking. For candy store, Sydney Bog Sweet Essentials was number one. Gift shop boutique, Catching Fireflies was number two in the ratings. Local hardware store, Durst Lumber and Ace Hardware was number three. Meat counter, Westbourne Market was number two. Salon, Step Out Berkeley was number three. Toy and Hobby Store, Dahl Hospital and Toys R' Us Shop was number three. Unique Store, America's Staff Shop was number three. But the most important one is the last one. Local shopping district in the area, downtown Berkeley, number one.
Wow.
So, the people in the area that read the Tribune and vote on this realize what a great job the DDA and the Chamber have done, and I, all my congratulations go to the hard-working people of the Berkeley Chamber and of the DDA. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Jack. Mr. Baumgarten.
Mr. Mayor, council's done such a wonderful job covering everything, I have no additions.
Mr. Attorney.
Mayor, I have nothing to say.
I see our state rep is with us, and if he would come to the microphone, I would like to thank him for his efforts on getting a sign on 696 that indicates how you get to the great downtown of Berkeley.
That was something I was actually going to mention, and I want to thank you, because you were the one that brought that to my attention, and that was back in 2015, actually, right when I took office. That was something you brought, you know, you said, "Berkeley should have a sign." And I said, "Yes, Berkeley should have a sign, I agree." And we started lobbying the Department of Transportation here, and ultimately, they agreed, and so now you can see Berkeley when you're driving east on 696. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing that up. We had a coffee hour here just the other day in Berkeley. It was a really good turnout, we had a really good discussion. For those people that were unable to make it, again, call me, email me, I'm always here to help. Again, my number, 517-373-0478, and you can email me at robertwittenberg@house.mi.gov. I think you're smiling, because I know it by heart now. Yes, I've said it many times, but like I said, we had a good turnout, but, you know, if you're not able to make any of the coffee hours, please reach out to me. Biggest issue we're dealing with right now in Lansing is the budget. We're hoping to have that done this week. The budget's with conference committee as of right now, so I don't have much to tell you. I will obviously evaluate it as it, once it's presented to us, we'll get to vote on it, and so I can come back and talk about that at some other time. I just know that, as you talked about, Mayor Pro Tem, our roads and how bad our roads are, and so there was a woefully inadequate plan that went through last session, and so I think we should be investing in our roads and making sure we're fixing our roads. That's an issue I hear all the time from people. Unfortunately, there was a push by the majority party to use money to drastically change and change, well, shut down part of our teachers' pension plans here in the state. We have a hybrid system that was put in place in 2010-11 area that is actually based on actuarial data, is 100% funded, but they're really pushing to get everyone onto a defined contribution plan, which will cost us quite a bit of money here in the state. And so, that was something that I was, obviously, I voted against, and not something that people are really, really pushing for here in the state. Again, I think people would rather see money go towards our roads than the 400 or so million dollars a year we'd have to put towards closing this plan, in addition to the unfunded liability that we are working on as of right now, anyway. So, something I wasn't excited to see the other day. It was a very close vote. I think the, there were 55 votes, and that's the minimum needed to pass something like that, or to pass a bill. Also, if anyone was paying attention, there was a, there were bills to do away with the permit for a concealed carry weapon, and this one was a close vote as well, and I spoke out against it on the House floor, and actually used the words of the late Supreme Court Justice Antonin Scalia, who actually mentioned that there are restrictions on the Second Amendment, just like there are in any other amendment, and that it's, you know, I personally don't think it's an undue burden to have to go take a class and learn how to use a weapon properly, how to store it. And so, you know, I took my class, and the police officers that I worked with over in Hazel Park all talked about how the class isn't sufficient enough, and they encourage you to take more training. And so, you had law enforcement all throughout the state all opposed to this, because again, it's just unnecessary. Unfortunately, it passed the House again, so that people don't have to get a permit or take a class in order to carry a concealed weapon. And so, I urge people to reach out to their senator, because it did go through the House, and it's on the Senate side, and I urge them to talk to their senator and just, you know, this is unnecessary. It's dangerous, and it's unnecessary. And then, I think that's it. And I know you mentioned with the gun safety, is it a gun awareness?
Gun safety awareness.
Gun safety awareness for June, and so this wasn't something that we wanted to be pushing during the gun safety awareness, but I appreciate you guys offering the during the gun safety awareness, but I appreciate you guys offering the locks and I encourage people to stop by public safety department to pick those up. But that's just a brief rundown in interest of everyone's time, I won't give you everything going on, but that just gives you a snapshot and again, if anyone ever needs anything, if you have any questions, if there's ever anything I can do, my door is always open, email me, call me, always happy to help. So with that, I don't know if anyone has any questions about what's going on.
Councilmember Kiddekel.
Real quick, can you use those four students in the House in any position? The robotic?
Yeah, we'd love to bring them in. We're looking at any kind of way to invest in fixing our roads in the state. I mean, we really do, we're ranked the worst as far as the roads. I think everyone knows when they're driving on our roads and especially if you're crossing into another state, you know when you're, you've left Michigan or when you're coming back into Michigan. And so, that's something we really, really need to address and so these kids, they're probably a lot smarter than some of my colleagues that I'm working with in Lansing, so.
Very good.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you again.
Last week, a member of the United States Congress and several others were shot practicing baseball. A disturbed person was expressing his bitterness and rage because he had different political views. At every level of government, for some time now, decent public servants are increasingly vulnerable to physical and verbal assaults. Civil discourse seems to have replaced, have been replaced by vile accusations, outrageous insinuations and pervasive suspicion. Most of it flows freely through social media. While we cannot alter these trends, we all, officials and residents alike, certainly can be more judicious in the comments and threads we advance on social media. Inflaming others with false and distorted information increases the risk of events like that which occurred in Washington. We wish those who were injured a speedy recovery and we pray that our political discourse abandons its current bullying flavor. On that note, is there a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn by Councilmember Kiddekel, support by Mayor Pro Tem Baker. Ms. Shera, would you please call the roll?
Terbrecht?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Blanchard?
Yes.
Greblin?
Yes.
Kiddekel?
Yes.
Stedman?
Yes.
O'Dwyer?
Yes.
Meeting is adjourned.
Indeed.